Good evening and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Monday, February 23rd. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada." [Music] Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. We'll move into the adoption of previous council meeting minutes. Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Givens. I move that the Minnesota City Council Meeting held February 9th, 2015 be adopted.
Thanks very much, Councillor McLean. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries and we have the adoption of the agenda. Have a motion for adoption of the agenda. Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you, Mayor Bill. I move that council adopt the agenda as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on the agenda? And seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries as well. And this brings us to the delegation portion of the agenda. This is an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward on any council-related matter, as long as it's not the subject of a public hearing. And we've got a few of those tonight. There was one group that let us know ahead of time that they were going to be interested in presenting to council. That was the Community Advisory Board on Homelessness. And so I think I see some representatives from the board here. If you'd like to come forward to the presenter's table and make some introductions, we'd be pleased to hear you. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity to come and be able to have a chance to talk a little bit about the homeless initiatives. What we really want to do tonight, I guess, is talk a little bit about the CAB role and responsibilities, who some of the CAB members are, and talk a little bit about the RFP process that everyone's getting quite familiar with.
Sure. My name's Angie Peters. I am currently the Chair for the Community Advisory Board on Homelessness. So the Community Advisory Board on Homelessness has been in existence in one form or another since 2003 and has been the decision-making body for projects being funded with both federal as well as provincial funding. City of Grand Prairie is required by the province to have a Community Advisory Board on Homelessness. Krista Gilroy is the Shelter Advisor for Housing and Homeless Supports Division with the Province of Alberta, and she sits on CAB as a provincial resource. So then just for your information, we have voting members on CAB and resource members. So I am currently the board chair and I sit as a representative for landlords. Adrienne Simmons is a voting member. She's with Alberta Health Services Health Inspector. Debbie Normington from the Grand Spirit Foundation. Erna Moon, representing youth and community at large. Michelle Margarich, representing newcomers and the Francophone population for their voice. Paul Lemay for the voice of seniors. Travis Mathias, also from Alberta Health Services from addictions. And Vy Mac was serving as the person from addictions and then also some Aboriginal representation. So she stayed on when Travis joined from Alberta Health Services very recently. So then as resources members, we have Krista Gilroy, as I mentioned, from the provincial government. Danelda Lang, the manager of Community Social Development. Elaine Sinclair from the federal government. Jean Manning, who's on the Provincial Interagency Council on Homelessness, a representative here from Grand Prairie, which Krista's on that council as well. Catherine Shepard, our supervisor of the homeless initiative from the CBO, also as a resource. And then Lynne Chapman from Alberta Human Services Provincial Government. Currently, we're recruiting, trying to find another voice from the Aboriginal community. We've contacted a number of their organizations and hope to have somebody join us. And also recruiting from faith communities for representation of that voice. And we have someone who has expressed interest and we're currently reviewing their references. So pretty sure that we're going to be bringing somebody on board from that community, so that'll be a great addition. So then Catherine will tell you about the RFP process.
Yeah, so I can talk a little bit about the RFP process. And it's interesting because our first RFP came out in 2012 and we talked about CAB kind of being involved in that decision-making process since about 2003. So a couple of things. In our contracts with the provincial government, there's actually a clearly outlined requirement for the procurement of services for the provincial funding to be in accordance with the requirements of the Northwest Partnership Trade Agreement. Prior to that, what was happening is the CAB was making funding decisions. The applications would come into CAB, CAB around the table would actually just review the proposals and kind of delegate how much money was available to individuals that applied. In 2011, we have an annual CBO review that comes from the Province of Alberta where they send a delegation up to do kind of an audit review of the CBO. And at that time, they identified an area of non-compliance in our conditional grant funding agreement. And the CBO was directed at that time that the tendering process under the Northwest Partnership Trade Agreement must be observed. So that's why 2012, we went to RFP. Also annually, I submit a service delivery plan. And in my service delivery plan, part of their process with the RFP decision-making is they ask us for an outline of what the RFP process is, what our decision-making and recommendation process is, and what the next steps are for approval. And then with that plan, they also want us to include what a grievance or an appeal process would look like. So 2012 was our first RFP and now we're going into our third one. The process that we've been using is those RFPs under the Northwest Partnership Trade Agreement, there's some legal ramifications and procedures that we're finding that must be followed in our working relationship with the city's purchasing department. So we have done a lot of work with the city purchasing process as far as them looking at our RFP process, giving us lots of feedback. And when we send them out, we always send them over to them for review prior to them being posted. In the interest of transparency, CAB then appoints a review committee. And the review committee this time around was made up of seven members, with the city's purchasing manager also present when we did the actual review. At that point, all the proposals are reviewed, they're ranked to determine the service provider that showed that the capacity to provide the required service. And the recommendations were based on the highest scoring proponent in that process. So this year is a little bit different and unique because in 2014, 15, there's been some new funding allocations that have come out. And the two funding areas, one was $100,000 that's been designated for youth homelessness. That is yet to go for RFP, but it will be. And there was $400,000 allocated to support the tenants for the Cairn on the Boulevard project. That funding was provided to address homeless issues and where applicable, provide support to tenants in housing units that were developed under that provincial housing capital initiative. And as Cairn on the Boulevard was one of those projects, the City of Grand Prairie as the CBO received the funding to support the tenants in the Cairn. To ensure clarity on the process, because at this point, this was new funding coming to us, CAB called directly to Susan Taylor, the Assistant Deputy Minister with the Family Violence Prevention and Homeless Supports Division. And then CAB from that had a conversation with both our Shelter Advisor Krista Gilroy, Jason Chance as the Executive Director. And CAB was informed at that point that the new funding was designated for a specific purpose, for youth and for supports for Cairn tenants. However, the process was not being directed by the province. Going forward with this, the other piece that I just wanted to add is that oftentimes when concerns and complaints go to the province, I would say 99 to 100% of the time, we get a call back saying there's been a concern and we would like to have a conversation around that. So on Friday of last week, a concern had gone to the province of Alberta and a phone call was directed back to the CBO and a teleconference was arranged by Jason Chance with the province and myself and Department Manager Danelda Lang. So we were contacted in regards to a concern coming from the Cairn Corporation in regards to this specific RFP. So a teleconference was held on Friday and Mr. Chance reiterated that the Provincial Outreach Support Services Initiative funding is allocated to the City of Grand Prairie as the CBO and that the province provides no direction on how those supports were to be delivered in the Cairn building or how to disburse the funds. As this is at the sole discretion of the City of Grand Prairie CBO upon recommendation from the Community Advisory Board on Homelessness. So at that point, I guess we could be open for a few questions. And I think Angie at the end wants to say a few words as well. Yeah, so any questions just around process-wise?
Sure. Well, I'll start with a question. So ladies, are you aware of the other seven cities, probably ones our size, not Evan and Calgary? What sort of process do they use to award basically service contracts?
So we have checked, yeah, so we did check with a few of them. And I mean, because new funding, one of these is what they call a permanent supportive housing unit, I checked with a couple of those. So Red Deer, for example, has what they call the Buffalo Hotel. And the Buffalo Hotel is done by Potter's Hands. So it's actually, Potter's Hand is doing it in a building that has a landlord that's not Potter's Hands. We talked to Calgary as a city and they gave us three or four different examples of permanent supportive housing projects. Every single one of those goes out for an RFP. So we did check. In a Wood Buffalo, we checked with them as well and the feedback from them was it doesn't matter what the project is, every single one of theirs goes out for RFP as well. Yeah. So we did do a little bit of homework around that. I think, you know, in doing this process, it's been new for us in looking at what's different between a case management team and what's different in regards to it being in a specific building. So I think for us, that was kind of new as well and we've asked lots of questions around that.
So is this the first time that the province, so just in terms of the timeline, the province has made a decision to do some funding, capital funding, to construct new spaces. And so is this the first time that the province has dedicated operational client support funds to back up their capital investment? I guess that's what I'm feeling, is it really directly saying there's that the province is invested in a facility, we want to ensure that the residents in that facility are being supported. Is that accurate?
I would say yes, in the fact that, yes, there's the capital side of that and they're saying that they've got some dollars that they want to allocate specifically to supports to tenants in that building. Absolutely.
And so the recommendation that's coming forward from the CAB, does it require the funds that are being recommended to provide support exclusively to tenants in that facility? How is that handled? Or assured, I suppose, that those funds will support those clients?
Well, I think a couple of things. There's been quite a few conversations with Mr. Cameron himself around his feelings around having a support team in the building and making sure that the supports aren't also going out community at large, that it specifically supports individuals in the building. So I think a couple of things. In the specific RFP, it said that the supports are onsite in that building. Like it's not an outreach support, it's absolutely for the tenants that are in the Cairn on the Boulevard building itself. So I think that was pretty clear in the RFP that that's what the intention was.
And, because I mean ultimately, this should, it is about the clients, right?
Yes.
Agencies or how the services deliver.
Absolutely.
And so were there any requirements in that RFP for availability of services in terms of days of the week, times of the day, those sort of things? Like what is it, what's the intent, I guess, in terms of availability of service?
Well, and I think the intent is when you look at permanent supportive housing and there's different models. There's a 24-hour-a-day model, which is more what the Fletcher Building originally was attempting to start and do. A PSH that's for 24-hour-a-day is for high chronic individuals that need 24-hour-a-day support. With the amount of money and the RFP when it went out, the Cairn building with the current clients is not set up to be a 24-hour-a-day permanent supportive, high-needs individuals. So when the RFP went out, it specifically said, what's the model, what's going to work for this building? And the models that have come back absolutely fit lower acuity individuals that are in the building that are not high chronic needs. That would be in a 24-hour-a-day.
So it wasn't scriptive, I guess you could say it was, there was an opportunity to buy the proponents to recommend a model. There was that flexibility with it?
There was a flexibility to say what you would do in that building, yes.
Are there any other questions on the Community Advisory Board or Councillor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Bill. Ladies, thanks for coming today and for your presentation. My question is around, I'm going to assume it's the owners of the Cairn or Mr. Cameron who is objecting, but was there, I guess the question that I'm looking for is as far as the RFP process. I know sometimes they're closely contested and a lot of times, like there's a couple of percentages between like one that wins the proposal and the other that loses the proposal. Was there any variance that you can attest to as far as the different RFP proposals? Maybe one from the Cairn or one from the awarding organization? I think it was YMCA. Was there a big difference or is there a reasoning as to why one got one whereas the in-house services at the Cairn, where they're offering to provide what they could in-house, why we decided to go out of house? And could that be because there's a strong variance between the two proposals?
Well, I guess a couple of things. The review committee reads obviously all of the proposals and then they rate them. So there was four applicants for the Cairn. So I mean, one of the questions that's come up a couple of times that I think for myself that I was curious about is whether or not something like the Cairn on the Boulevard could be outsourced. And so it's kind of like I gave a call to Bob and I talked to him and I talked to a couple of other cities around that. Like how do you decide what is going out for an RFP in the first place? And the end result that came back was that it can't, a project can't be outsourced unless there's no one else.
Sole source, that's what you mean to say.
Yes, sole source. Can't be sole sourced unless there's only one proponent that could possibly do that particular project. We had four applicants that came back that all had proposals that said we can do a service in this particular building. So with that, they all have, they were all rated. In the rating criteria, YMCA obviously was the highest proponent. There was O to the four. There was a second one that came in as a second place that was also not the Cairn Corporation. So there was actually, would have been a third place to the top. Yeah, so I'm not sure if that answered your question.
I was just wondering if like how wide is the spread? Are we talking 5%, 10%, 20%?
I mean, I'd probably have to go back and find the actual scoring. We don't oftentimes actually release the scoring to the agencies itself. We'll allow and also have the opportunity, once we're done this process, for them to come and say, can you give me some feedback on the proposal? So we will absolutely do that with all of the applicants that have applied. They'll have a chance to actually come back and discuss that.
All right, sounds good. I do have a couple more questions, if that's okay.
Yeah, sure.
Now, for the winning proponent, I guess, if they're not sole sourced and they're outsourced, would they, would they be, obviously they'll be in the building, but would they be required to set up inside the building at all? Or was that part of their RFP? Or are they just outsides, like having their own offices and stuff like that?
No, the offices and the supports are onsite in the building.
Okay.
Yeah, so they'll be paying rent in the building to have the space in the building to do the service. But it wasn't an option for them to be off-site and provide a, it would almost then have been similar to, I guess, scattered site where someone's outside and comes in to visit people. But this one is, the staffing model is onsite in the building.
Okay, no, that's great to hear. And I guess my last question is, as far as, oh, I just lost it. Sorry.
It's off the hook here. Councillor Rice is in the queue, so we can go to her. Councillor Rice?
Four applicants on the RFP. Is that a lot? Is that higher than the last one we did? Or is that that we actually have four agencies that offer these services in the community?
Yeah, yeah, it's very typical.
Okay, that's, that's pretty heartening, actually. So that's.
Councillor Thiessen, do you remember your question? Yeah, okay.
I guess now that I remember my question, it was about the funding, because you said it was new funding that came to you.
Yes.
How, how did that funding come to, come to us or how did we become to be aware of that funding? Did the province just give us a call and say, hey, we're giving you more money, find a way to use it? Is there the specific projects, youth homelessness and in the Cairn building? Is there, was there anything that happened beforehand that allowed us to get that extra funding?
There really wasn't. So my understanding was there was some extra funding from the province and there had been lots of discussions up there about designated funding to identified needs. One of them was definitely youth. So when the funding came down, the decision had been made at the provincial level, the amounts and where it was going to go. So we were informed that $100,000 was coming to Grand Prairie for a youth project and that $400,000 was designated for tenant support in the Cairn on the Boulevard.
The other piece that always happens is that there are members, resource members from the provincial and federal government who are a part of our CAB meetings, often by teleconference. But as a community, they're at that organization, we're always voicing that we need more supports in our, in our community. So, yeah, not really out of the blue in that they, every month, they hear it from us that we need more supports.
So for us to get that extra money, it's like.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm assuming that every opportunity you people get, you also send that message upstream that we need more.
Oh, definitely.
And another note on that too, last year, all of the seven cities were asked to put in recommendations of our community needs around permanent supportive housing. And so a briefing had gone to the province around our needs because what we're finding in particularly our 24-hour-a-day permanent supportive housing for our high chronic need individuals, we still don't have a model for that yet in Grand Prairie. And so oftentimes when we hear of our individuals that are not successful, it's oftentimes because they're being placed in scattered site apartments when what they need is a higher level of intensive supports.
Yeah. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Givens. Just a quick question, Catherine and Angie. I understand the RFP process, but not, you know, every RFP is different, how it's aligned to the RFP. Sometimes when certain things are new, sometimes you look at it in different, like you said, how the money's allocated is up to the city. And maybe, you know, we get committees that help push us that way or direct us. But sometimes something sticks out where isn't really that RFP for it. So the question I have is, you're saying there's none across Alberta where there are all RFPs for the funding and throughout the whole province of Alberta?
I would say that cities have the option of, if they can, they can sole source it.
Exactly.
So the only city in my understanding to this date that has not been doing all across the board RFPs was Edmonton. But Edmonton, in talking to our seven cities meeting at our last CBO and seven cities meeting, is that they're also being, I guess, from the provinces, discussions with them are coming into alignment with the RFP process.
They do.
Yeah.
Councillor Rice?
I'm confused now, Catherine, you really confused me.
Yeah, so if they can sole source it.
No, 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 I'm not interested in that.
All right.
Sorry.
You said the province, you know, talked to us and said, okay, we got $100,000 for emergency youth shelter. And, and then what?
Yes, so $400,000 for tenant support in Cairn on the Boulevard.
Okay, I guess that's what confuses me. I, I'm not ever familiar with the province saying, you know, okay, you've got a committee in Grand Prairie, that's very nice, we're really proud of their commitment, here's what they're supposed to do. Use this money for this particular, I've never known them to name who the money is going to other than programming.
Well, and I think, Councillor Rice, that's one challenge that I've had in this conversation too, is that we have to remember that if you think about client populations, right, or the population of people, there's youth, is that a broad term?
Yeah.
And the people that are in the building, it's funded by the province. The name happens to be the Cairn, but, you know, so they've identified it that way, right? So they've said, the group of people that are living in this building, we want to support them. But they didn't say who is intended to deliver the service. That's the distinction, right? It's about who is the money intended to support, the people living in that building versus how well the service to be delivered.
It's really the same for the youth funding. It's to serve youth, to address homelessness issues in youth, but it is not funding to our shelter, for a youth shelter. So that also will go out for a request for proposal because there are other groups in the community who serve youth, who might be able to provide the service that they need.
Okay.
And I think, Helen, this is the first permanent supportive housing which we're very blessed to have, but also tied to provincial capital funding that we've had come on stream in our city. So I think all of those, there's Grand Prairie and there's a couple of other cities as well that had the same build with the capital funding, that all then had the same funding kind of tied to tenant supports in their buildings.
Councillor Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Givens. Just a question in regards, when you looked at the other communities, was there any, did you look at the role of council that they played in terms of setting out the RFP process and setting up the terms for which the RFPs go out?
And it's interesting because not all of the CBOs are cities, which is interesting. So Red Deer is, it goes before their council as well. Wood Buffalo is, Grand Prairie is, we've got Lethbridge. So some of them are cities and some have, Calgary has the Calgary Homeless Foundation, Edmonton has the Homero Trust. The city ones all go before council, obviously for the motion. They all have the Community Advisory Board that does the recommendations to council based on an RFP process.
Councillor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Givens. I was, thought I had an understanding at this one point and then I got a little confused. So there is a potential that technically the Cairn on the Boulevard could get money, but it wouldn't be distributed through them. Is that correct?
Well, the Cairn on the Boulevard, as far as the tenant supports, has, is one of the recommendations. So supports and a team will work out of that building to provide tenant supports.
One other thing, ladies, a question that I have, not being as familiar as maybe I should be with the other CAB boards in the other communities. Is there, this is kind of similar to Councillor Tarrant's question, is there typically a council representative on the CAB board or is there a mixture of that?
I would say a mixture of that. I know one city that does have a councillor on it.
And the others?
Yeah, so I mean, that's certainly always something that is an option.
Okay. Any other questions? Does anybody else ringing in? Ms. Peters, did you say that you had something else?
Sure, we'll just close. Thanks for the opportunity to come and clarify and give you more information. We've been brainstorming a bit how to do that a bit more informally a couple of times a year as well and appreciating that you have many groups who want to meet with you. So I just need to say that we really appreciate our city council's commitment to addressing homelessness in our community and increasing the access to affordable housing with supports as opposed to just affordable housing. The Cairn project has been a long journey from proposal stage to building to finally getting this provincial funding to support the people who are living in the Cairn because, you know, key that people not just get housing but also have supports. And it's really exciting to be at this stage. Also, over the past five years or more, we've been building skills in our community with agencies who are providing services for our people. So great that we've got four agencies applying for a particular RFP and for the other ones, we did as well. The RFP process allows us to review and establish new parameters from time to time based on our learnings and as new funding is released. We also closely watch the progress that's made in all seven cities in Alberta and we look forward to having the YMCA bring their experiences from the work that they've been doing in Edmonton to support us and grow our knowledge base here in Grand Prairie. So we also really appreciate the City of Grand Prairie's support and expertise to have Bob guide us through the RFP process to make sure that our vulnerable populations are well-served with the funding that is passed to our community. So we appreciate that support that we have because our CBO is the city.
Thanks very much, ladies.
Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
So as I said at the outset, this is the delegation portion of the agenda. It's an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward on any community-related matter. I don't know if there's anybody else that wanted to come forward this evening to make a presentation to council. And if there is, then I'd invite you to come forward to the council table.
I mean, that's certainly always something that is an option.
Okay, any other questions? Does anybody else ringing in? Ms. Peters, did you say that you had something else?
Sure, we'll just close. Thanks for the opportunity to come and, and clarify and give you more information. We've been brainstorming a bit how to do that a bit more informally, a couple of times a year as well, and appreciating that you have many groups who want to meet with you. So I just need to say that we really appreciate our city council's commitment to addressing homelessness in our community and increasing the access to affordable housing with supports, as opposed to just affordable housing. The Cairn project has been a long journey from proposal stage to building, to finally getting this provincial funding to support the people who are living in the Cairn, because, you know, key that people not just get housing, but also have supports, and it's really exciting to be at this stage. Also, over the past five years or more, we've been building skills in our community with agencies who are providing services for our people. So great that we've got four agencies applying for a particular RFP and, and for the other ones, we did as well. The RFP process allows us to review and establish new parameters from time to time, based on our learnings and as new funding is released. We also closely watch the progress that's made in all seven cities in Alberta, and we look forward to having the YMCA bring their experiences from the work that they've been doing in Edmonton to support us and, and grow our knowledge base here in Grand Prairie. So we also really appreciate the city of Grand Prairie's support in expertise to have Bob guide us through the RFP process to make sure that our vulnerable populations are well-served with the funding that, that is passed to our community. So we appreciate that support that we have, because our CBO is the city.
Thanks very much, ladies.
Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So as, as I said at the outset, this is the delegation portion of the agenda. It's an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward on any community-related matter. I don't know if there's anybody else that wanted to come forward this evening to make a presentation to council. And if there is, then I'd invite you to come forward to the council table or to the presenter's table. Forward and introduce yourself, and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Given and council. I'm Brad Cameron, and I'm the owner of the Cairn on the Boulevard, and we just heard a few conversations and points about that. I'd like to thank you guys all for your incredible support over the last eight or nine years. As Angie said, it has been quite a long journey. To be specific, so Helen, you asked a question, why, why did that money come to Grand Prairie and why was it designated to the building? I believe it's because I have been in constant communication with the province, and I have been describing to them the people that we have there and some of the issues that we're still struggling with. And one of the big benefits to a building like the Cairn is to reduce our tenants' use of emergency services, and then that reduces the cost to the city and, and the province overall. And that is why the province has put so many dollars towards this problem over the past few years. So we got the first part, we have everyone housed, but we're still struggling with some of those services. So I have been talking to them, explaining to them what I've been trying to do and the struggles I've been having. And I believe that's why the funds came directly to our building. That being said, the funds are to support the residents in the building with whatever they need. And as, as they described, those support services can be provided by anybody. As you know, I've done a rather extensive tour of a number of buildings and programs. And I, as I've shared with you before, the most successful buildings have services provided by the group that manages and oversees the building. I know there are many examples of that in Alberta, and there are even more in Vancouver. And that's, those are the models that I've been trying to copy, the ones that are the best. As I understand it, there was not a need for an RFP. It is up to the city's discretion to choose that. So that's, that's the process they chose to follow. Once I did see the RFP, I don't believe it accurately described the program that our residents need. And I also believe the scoring system was skewed to more experienced agencies. So, and once I had gone through that, I actually shared with senior administration that, you know, I do believe it skewed and that I had a very low probability of success, even though the successful proponents have never been in the building, have never met any of our residents, and frankly, haven't even, you know, been to Grand Prairie or had any conversations about it. So that's kind of frustrating. I guess my frustration is that if this is the process we're supposed to follow, did the process come up with the best answer? Whether, whether that's me or somebody else, we chose an Edmonton agency to deliver services in our community. And we've been working on building capacity in our community for quite a long time. And so to sort of say that none of the people in our community are able to provide those services was even more disappointing. Yeah, so I think that's the big ones that I wanted to cover. Do you guys have any specific questions for me?
I see Counselor McLean has a question for you.
Thank you, Mayor, just a couple of quick questions. Thanks, Brad, for showing up tonight. Is your building full to all the units that are ready to go? Is it a full house now?
Yeah, yeah, all the residential units are full.
And I believe your plan is, your passion in getting this building built, you're planning on living in this building as well, and?
Yeah, yeah, we've been working on building a strong, inclusive community from day one. We even hired sort of three-floor coordinators, and they meet people when they very first come, and we give them welcome baskets. And we have different events that people come down to. And all of these things are, you know, things you do to help build community, similar to what the city's doing with their neighborhood associations. And, you know, to this point, I've been bearing the cost of those things, and that's a lot of the stuff that I've been describing to the province. And I think that's part of why they saw this as such a positive opportunity and a, a way to continue that development through their funding as well.
One last question, thank you, Mayor Given. What was, under your proposal, the naming that you were hoping to run for helping the tenants within the building? How was, how was that named?
Oh, it's Name the Cairn Community.
Thank you.
Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Brad, just a couple of questions here, if you don't mind. When you're dealing with the government, was there any funding put towards a program like this in the past? I know the building is just, it's been in the last year or so.
In the Cairn?
Yeah.
Oh, they, they haven't funded any support services? To this point, all the funding from the province and through the city has been strictly for capital. And none of those dollars are to be used for support services.
Just as a matter of interest, was there any promise implied that you would be getting some funding somewhere along the line?
No, not, not, not at all. We just started this program based on the programs that we had seen. For more than a year, though, I have been having conversations with different people up at the provincial level. There, there were a number of different groups that were interested in playing a larger role in the Cairn moving forward. But no, there was no promise of, of, suggesting that you were getting funding in the future or nothing like that. No.
Okay. Mr. Cameron, do you, do you know of any other provincially funded capital projects similar to yours that have also received funding like this, tied to the supports in that facility?
No, I, I don't, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Not aware of that?
Yeah, I, I actually, I haven't really followed through on any other capital projects similar.
Is he enough with your own?
Yeah, it's been, yeah, a little hectic, for sure.
Fair enough. Any other questions, Mr. Cameron? I don't see anybody else in the queue. So Brad, thanks very much for being here tonight. Share with us. Okay. As I said, this is the delegation portion, is opportunity for anybody to come forward. I see one other person who'd like to come forward and address council. Please introduce yourself, our recording secretary, and welcome.
So thanks, I'm Jane Manning. I'm a citizen, and I am on the interagency council on homelessness and have been very interested in the plan locally and very supportive of what we are developing. But we are very much in a developmental stage. At the council, I do get to hear the perspective from other communities and things that are happening with the supports in particular to individuals. And I really feel that we have ways to grow and develop in really providing supports. I was a, a real supporter of the Cairn on the Boulevard being built. And with dollars to suppo, I don't know why I'm nervous. I've been retired too long.
You present to an audience more often.
That's right. And supporting the homeless population. But I have to say, as an individual and somebody on the council, I've been a bit disappointed at the need of the people that have gone into a facility over time. And I'm really hoping with the supports team in there and opportunity that more individuals coming through our Housing First and our Assessment, who really need those units, will get those units and that will see a bigger group of people who really need the supports that an agency is going to provide there. I think we really have to see that transition. It's not where I, as a community member and taxpayer, would like to see it. So I hope you consider that. And I also just wanted to kind of clarify something that Brad, Mr. Cameron said, that the YMCA is a local organization. It will get support in developing this program from the knowledge and skills in Edmonton. But they are a local organization looking to grow and develop.
Thanks very much for the presentation. Nerves off now that you.
Yeah.
Is there?
Got better.
Is there anybody else, any questions for Ms. Manning? Okay, so in terms of your time in the hot seat, there's no questions for her, so it couldn't have been that.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thanks very much. Again, so this is the delegation portion of our agenda. We have this every two weeks, and so we try to create that opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward on any council-related matter, whether it's like we've had tonight, a subject on our agenda item, or whether it's just something that the community wanted to bring forward to council. But we do have that opportunity and try and ensure that that's available for the community. I don't see anybody else coming forward, so I'll close the delegation portion of our agenda, and we'll move on. We had no public hearings tonight. We have no unfinished business, but we do have some reports to start some future public hearings. And the first one of those is item eight point one, bylaw C thirteen thirteen, a road closure. Administration informed me that there is a slight amendment to the dis, legal description. So council will see that handed out to them. So we'll just make that note that council does have the amended version of the, of the bylaw with that amended text. But I'd look for a motion to introduce first reading, and we move on to date, time and location. Counselor Rice?
I move first reading of bylaw C thirteen thirteen being a road closure to close a portion of Hundred and Fortyth Avenue, south of Lot Nine, Block One, Plan Nine Four Two, One Five Five One.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any, sorry, no discussion or debate, first reading, so I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Rice?
I move that Monday, March twenty-third, twenty fifteen, at six thirty PM at city council chambers, be established as the date, time and location for the public hearing.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any discussion on that motion for date, time and location? Again, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Motion carries. That would take us to item eight point two, bylaw C thirteen fourteen, another road closure. If I could have a motion for first reading? Counselor Rice?
I move first reading of bylaw C thirteen fourteen, being a road closure bylaw to close a portion of Plan Five Eight Five Nine, known as the Hundredth Street, adjacent to Lot One A, Plan Five Eight Five Nine RS.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Rice. I'll call for the vote on that first reading. Thank you. Motion carries, Counselor Rice, date, time.
I move that Monday, March twenty-third, twenty fifteen, at six thirty PM at city council chambers, be established as the date, time and location for the public hearings.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any discussion on the date, time and location as proposed? Again, seeing nobody ringing in, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And that would take us to eight point three, the land use bylaw amendment, C twelve sixty dash one five, from public service district to direct control district. We'll look for a motion for first reading, Counselor McLean.
Mayor Given, I move that we're going to be given to bylaw C dash twelve sixty dash fifteen, being amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any, sorry, again, sorry, getting a little bit of a rhythm there. No discussion or debate on first reading, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. Okay, Counselor McLean, discussion or debate on?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that Monday, March twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, at six thirty PM in council chambers, be established as the date, time and location for the public hearing.
Thank you, that's the one that I'm allowed to ask, if there's any debate. Does anybody have a problem with March twenty-third? No, it doesn't look like it, everybody's up for three public hearings. So I'll call for the vote on that date, time and location as proposed. Thank you. That motion also carries, that handles all of our report items. We move on to committee business, we start with nine point one, the Community Growth Committee meeting from February tenth. And Counselor O'Toole, I think that's your set of minutes.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move the council receive the minutes of the Community Growth Committee meeting held on February tenth, twenty fifteen.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, those minutes are adopted, and Counselor O'Toole, I think you had some business arising?
Yes, we had the Francophone North American Network. I move the council direct the mayor to write the mayor of Quebec City requesting membership in the Francophone North American Network. As the city of Grand Prairie is a, considered a Francophone community, this would be just a networking position for us. It's still in the process, and the fine lines, I would guess, aren't necessarily figured out at this point, but we'd like to be connected to this organization somehow.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Rice?
What is the cost?
I understand that there's no charge at this point.
Okay, thanks.
At, at this point, there's no charge. That's not saying that in the future there could be a charge.
The intent discussed at committee was to essentially get on the list.
Okay.
There was noted in administration's research that there was an intent to host a foundational meeting of the network potentially in the fall, but no dates have been set for that. So I think council should be aware there, if we are accepted to join, there may be a desire to represent it, send a representative from Grand Prairie, whether that's council or from the community, but there may be some of those kinds of costs.
Yeah.
I, you know, I think fair enough to identify that.
Any costs that come up in the future will come back here.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor McLean?
Given, I think it's a very smart, you know, on board. I've been here twenty-seven years, and French has really grown in our city. We're kind of short of a real true French high school, goes up to grade nine, so hopefully we'll be working on that if we get part of this organization. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. Any other discussion or debate? Counselor Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given, and I will definitely be supporting this motion. I think there's some great ties between our French community here and the French community elsewhere, and I look forward to exploring that partnership. Also, just wanted to note, we do have an article in the La Franco, it's the Franco-Albertan newspaper, and they were really supportive of this initiative, and they gave us a bit of exposure on their site because of that, so.
Thanks very much, Counselor Tarrant, for highlighting that for us. I'm glad that you're reading La Franco. But I, I think that is, you know, for council, I think that's the intent, is to get some more exposure for Grand Prairie and the Francophone community, both, you know, locally here in Alberta, but also across North America. Thanks for highlighting that, Counselor Tarrant. Seeing nobody else ringing in, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you, and that motion carries. Counselor O'Toole?
Revisions, I move council approve the revisions to Policy Two O Eight. And they're basically advanced ticket proceeds as amended. To speak on that, there's some dates and a number of days in the amount that we would require from a promoter. And we're doing some amending of those dates. And also, the word Revolution Place is now in the books, not the Crystal Center or Lewis Family Center.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Rice?
Won't be supporting this motion. I feel that the policy revision is actually silly. The policy revision came about as a request for a review that you look at returning some of the proceeds of ticket sales for people that have longstanding track records of having us sell their tickets for different events. This policy revision, as I read it, would only give money back to people who are having events in, in Revolution Place, which makes no sense to me. If you're going to return ticket funds, portion of them, you're going to return a portion of ticket funds. And so I find that it's actually a silly policy amendment, the way it's written.
Thanks, Counselor Rice. Counselor McLean?
Mayor Given, just a quick question, maybe Counselor O'Toole. I'm on the different sides of this one, four days, and then it has events, entertainment, sport organization, we get events highlighted, but specifically, does that mean all of them categorized? Holding the four, like, I'm a little bit not sure on this policy. So the question I'm asking, it's got events highlighted. So that means like an entertainment, like we get a band coming in someday, maybe on this policy, they gotta do the same thing? What, like, do you know that answer? Does administration know this answer?
I'm going to turn that over to our Community Growth Director. There was a lot of discussion taking place, and I'm hoping that the Community Growth Director can give us some background.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I believe it's highlighted only because that was a word that was changed and from the previous bylaw. And from the previous bylaw, it's not restrictive to, to a particular function.
So, so the word was added to expand the range of potential events?
I believe so.
Thank you. Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Bill. Just gonna expound upon that answer there. There's a lot of debate within our committee structure about is five days too long? Like, it seemed like, just with the modifications to this, that the only events that we were going to be able to host there and return proceeds of the ticket funds was events that were five days or longer. So it would be to major sporting dates. It was seven, and then went down to six, and then we fought for four, and we got it. And, and so, yeah, so it was basically opening the door for more events that are coming, like trade shows, stuff like that, that are gonna sell tickets and stuff like that. So it gives them the ability to make back their, their money. But anyways, besides that, I'm going to, I'm gonna speak, I'm kind of gonna echo Helen Rice's comments. Though I voted for this at committee level, because I, I really do like some of the amendments. Personally, I don't think this policy is, is finished. I think that there's an opportunity, especially because we do have longstanding partners in the community that deal through the Crystal Center with the proceeds, and I know the original intent of why this came forward to committee. And I don't think that was actually addressed. I think it was to a certain degree. But I don't think we fully fleshed it out and found something that might work for us and within the community. So for me here tonight, I probably will not be supporting this. Actually, no, I won't be supporting this motion.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Any other discussion or debate? I'll just relate that the policy that's here at council in front of us is not the same policy that showed up at committee level. At the committee level, as Counselor Thiessen referenced, there was discussion about how to open this up to a broader range of events and smaller ones. Administration was able to share with us that there was potentially one event that had ever taken advantage of the policy in the past. And the feeling at committee was that we should try to make this as broadly applicable, or at least as useful as possible. And so that's where, on point number three, administration's recommendation was that the events must book Revolution Place for a minimum of, of seven days. The committee chose to go down to four. And administration's recommendation was that the event would generate a minimum of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in ticket proceeds. And the committee went down to five hundred thousand. So essentially lowering the bar under which other events could qualify. I appreciate the point that council members have made about the fact that this applies only to events that are in Revolution Place. That is a hundred percent true. I believe it's not exactly accurate to say that that hasn't been addressed, because I believe that was brought forward to council very specifically. Council chose, intentionally chose not to, to make a change on that issue. This is an additional revision that came forward, not connected to that issue. So that issue did come to council, sort of question asked and answered by a vote of council. We chose not to make a change on that. The intent of this is to lower that bar so that the events that do have Revolution Place, that more events can qualify. Counselor Rice?
I urge you, if you're gonna say no to something, say no. Don't dress it up with rules that are so silly that God himself couldn't organize an event that would qualify under this policy. You know, just have the courage to say, no, we don't want to do it. Don't adopt a policy that makes no sense.
So Counselor Rice, I think you're getting to the exact point that I just said. Council did say no to the previous request. And this is something that's different. So this policy that's in front of us today, revisions to this policy, aren't driven by the previous request from an event promoter to get their ticket proceeds back for an event held offsite. That, that question was actually asked to council. Council dealt with it, and the decision of council was not to make a change.
I.
That has happened.
My recollection is council said no at that time, but did want to look at a policy amendment. I, I didn't think that door was closed totally when that came before council. But at any rate, you know.
Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I also won't be supporting this motion. I think that the first time that this policy came to the table, that we addressed concerns of the potential risk, I, I think that still doesn't alleviate the risk. I think that if we look at other facilities of like size and capacity, that they don't have these policies. It's not normal practice to give money back prior, and I won't be supporting the motion.
Okay. Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. So just to be clear with council, the intent of not supporting the policy that's here today. If the policy doesn't carry, then the one that currently exists, because this is an existing policy, it's only amendments. The one that currently exists would stay on the books. And I believe, and I would be happy to be helped out. But, you know, the highlighted changes, you know, in terms of the name. But also that the minimum that an event would have to book Revolution Place for would stay at, I think it was ten days. At the committee, administration was recommending moving down to seven. Committee chose to go down even further. So policy that's currently on the books that would stay active if this one wasn't passed would stay at that Revolution Place had to be booked for ten days, a minimum of ten days. And that event would generate, have to generate a minimum of greater than seven hundred and fifty thousand. It was, it was more than seven hundred and fifty thousand, because administration was recommending to reduce it. So I guess what I'm suggesting or hoping that council would consider is making some changes to this policy, if you support the concept of giving back anything, to make some changes to this policy to make it actually more useful. Or we can just leave the less useful one on the books. Is my position. Counselor O'Toole?
Just like to make a couple of comments. I do agree with you, Mayor Given. This isn't necessarily the best policy review, but it's, it will make changes that will encourage the use of the facility. Maybe in six months to a year, we make another review. But at least this way, it's getting to be more user friendly, and maybe we'll get more entertainers or events in this facility.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. I don't see anybody else in the queue. So I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion does not carry, and so we'll move on to our next item of business. Sorry, before we move on to nine point two, Counselor O'Toole, anything else that you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes?
A natural gas company, and they had made a presentation, the company is based out of Calgary, to possibly move into the area. And they wanted to just do a presentation on what they had to offer and possibly move into the city in, in some area in the future. So I can tell you, it's a natural gas reservoir storage facility. Yeah, they were, safety and everything was all addressed, and it's a matter of if things work in place. And, yeah, it was a great event, a great discussion that we had that day.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Clayton?
Just a question of clarification. In the minutes, there was another recommendation that come to council, but it didn't make the agenda. Should we, would we normally address that now, or does it come back next time? I'm just not clear. It's under two point two, there was a motion made that council approved a request for waiver of fees. But it didn't make, yeah, so I'm just not sure.
I just would want to make sure. That was Community Growth, and I would have to check with administration if that's actually under our policy, whether it's council approves, or whether the Community Growth Committee has the authority to approve. Is that committee acting as a development authority does have some sets of powers? And I'm sorry, I'm just not familiar with that. So Counselor Clayton, I guess, you know, we can either, if it needs to come back to council, we can get it at the next council meeting. There may be a reason, I'm just not a hundred percent certain that there's not a reason why it isn't here today. Thanks for the catch, though, and we'll make sure to follow up with you. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd like to make him a referral. Motion put Revolution Place event, so ticket proceeds, policy two oh eight revision, back to the next Community Growth or whenever suitable by administration.
So any council member can make that referral, and so Counselor McLean has just done that. So that is referred back to committee. We'll add that as an agenda item to an upcoming committee. Move on to nine point two, the commu, excuse me, Council Committee of the Whole Meeting. Counselor Logan?
I'd like to move that council receive the minutes of the Council Committee of the Whole Meeting held February tenth.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Doesn't look like they reflect what happened?
Yeah, I just would just say that we did receive a report from administration and had a discussion, but there's no action coming forward.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. I'll call for the vote to adopt that set of minutes. Thank you. That motion carries. And then would take us to nine point three, the Community Living Committee. Now, I think that was Counselor Radburn's meeting, but Counselor Clayton, since Counselor Radburn's here, not here, you're gonna step in for us?
Sure. I'll do my best. Thank you, Mayor Given. I would like to make a motion that the Community Living Committee meeting minutes be approved in the meeting held February tenth.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Does it look like everything is in place? Okay, it looks like it must, so I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. As usual, it was a great meeting. There was a few things of interest, the transit master plan R F P update was presented.
Counselor Clayton, I'll just, we'll ask you, we've got, it was a great meeting, because there's a whole bunch of business that came out.
Yep.
Deal with the business items, maybe first.
Sure.
Do, just a review of anything that we don't deal with in the business items.
So there was a motion that came forward. The council recommend approve the transfer of capital project funding in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, originally allocated for a bobcat and trailer. Be reallocated to the purchase of a four by four truck with, with portable sander.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. And I just wanna, thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. I just want to clarify, I think that's seventy five thousand, not seven hundred and five thousand.
Yes, seventy five thousand.
Be really expensive.
It'd be really cheap. We could get a couple of them.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. And so this is a reallocation of funds that currently exist in the budget, I believe.
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question to administration. Portable sander is supposed to help out in the winter conditions with ice. Can they just speak to that quickly, please, and tell us how it's gonna be good, because we know it's very bad out there?
Yes, Your Worship. The city currently has one truck and portable sander that can be used for trails. And this would be a second unit that we would put into service. We've noted that the first unit, it works great, it's just that we, it takes a very long time to cover all the trails. And so having a second unit would be, enable us to get through the trail system much quicker, especially after the freeze thaw and freezing rain events that we've had. And certainly, administration viewed it as a higher priority than having the bobcat and trailer in terms of arcs fleet of, of equipment.
Thanks very much. And just to clarify, that is specifically for use on pedestrian trails. It's not on for roadways? Okay, any other discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would recommend that council give first reading to bylaw C dash eleven seventy three D, the Combat of Sports Commission bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. I'll call for the vote on first reading. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Clayton?
I would recommend the council give second reading to bylaw C dash eleven seventy three D, the Combat of Sports Commission bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. I see Counselor Rice is in the queue. May have some questions about the changes. I know I do, and.
Like, what's in it for us?
Is there somebody that can speak to the proposed changes to the Combat of Sports Commission bylaw? Either from the legislature or, Mr. Roth?
So in a real high level summary, this amendment actually clarifies some of the concerns that were identified by promoters in the last few events in terms of how deposits are handled and how fees are collected. It makes it much clearer for promoters as to what, what is their, their funds that they get back at the end of an event and the portion that the city keeps. And that's really what our intent is with this, this amount. Essentially, at the end of the day, the promoter provides deposits upfront to hold the event and to cover any costs. And in the end of the day, the city keeps anything that's listed as a, a license fee, including fees for the event, fees for the promoter, fees for the contestants. So anything that's listed as schedule A are the fees that the city keeps. And any expenses comes out of those deposits, and then it's reconciled at the end of the event.
So, do we need to set this up, or do we just need to more efficiently, you know, pay them the money that we should pay them?
Worship, it currently is in the, the existing bylaw. And the existing bylaw is somewhat confusing in terms of the wording that's in there, in terms of there's words in there that says, you know, certain deposits are non-refundable deposits. And yet, industry standard is that those deposits are returned to, are applied against the expenses that the, that the city has. So it's, it's a matter, the intent is to clean up those, the wording and make it simpler for the promoters and, and clarify what administration does.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Community Living Director, Dr. Roth, was correct a hundred percent. Some of its terminology and what we feel is the right wording. Basically, the promoters didn't feel that was the proper wording. So we did meet with industry, we got it down, so it's quite plain Jane. We also imposed some fines that we needed to implement. A fighter comes up here, he's overweight, and the fight doesn't get held, because it's a, quite a difference in weight. Then we would find the fighter, and part of the, the amount of the, the money that was eligible would go directly to the opposing player, competitor. And so it's just putting things back in place. We're just, basically what we're doing is a little housekeeping. And bottom line is, we'll probably be doing that again next year and the year after that. It's just things that we have noticed, that we've had some concerns about, and we don't want to deal with that on a regular basis. We've got it clear, it's black and white, and the promoters get this long before the event. Thank you.
Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a quick question to Counselor O'Toole, because I know he's involved in this quite heavily. I just want to know, I've seen the events happen at a restaurant in the city, and then mostly at the tech center. I know we're looking at changing just wording here. Is this gonna help in some way where the event's not big enough yet to be at the Revolution Place? Is there borders up for it not being at Revolution Place? Just wondering.
Well, I can answer that quite easily. We are not the host. We don't deal with any of the promotion at all. We are there to make sure that the event itself is done safely. The competitors are healthy and able to compete. But we do not promote any location. That's up to the promoter and the event organizer where it's being held. We, we do suggest that we would like to see it in the city. But that's, that's, that's an industry thing. Like, you're gonna go where the best deal is at, and what works best for you. I will tell you that when they do the weigh-ins and stuff like that, they do choose to use a location in the city.
Just a final question. So the final one is, it's never been at the Revolution Place or former Crystal Center?
No, no, that's not true. We've had two events there. Yeah, it's not that it's.
Promoter.
It's, it's not big enough to justify, from what I understand, the amount of rent that, you know, that, that you would have to have. Like, it's, it holds four thousand people. Most of these events usually attract a thousand to fifteen hundred. And it's not necessarily economical for the promoter to rent a huge space when they only require a middle-sized space.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks very much. Any other discussion? We're still on to second reading? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote on second reading? Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council have third reading to bylaw C dash eleven seventy three D, Combat of Sports Commission bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. So that motion is to have third reading here tonight. In order for council to pass three readings of bylaw in one evening, we have to have this motion to have third reading. If it doesn't carry unanimously, then third reading, third and final reading of the bylaw would come back at a subsequent council meeting. Any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third reading here tonight? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, so we can have third reading. Counselor Clayton? Sure. Counselor O'Toole?
So there is an event happening in March twentieth, next month. And we've talked to the promoter, and we will be implementing the rules that we are voting on today. He's quite aware of that. Or me? If it's passed, absolutely. But we're going with those rules, and the fines and the bylaws and all that. And he's totally aware. And he's totally aware, and he's in favor of that. He's very, very happy that we're going that direction. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Otul. Councilor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council give third reading to bylaw C dash eleven seventy-three D, the Combative Sports Commission bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councilor Clayton. Again, opportunity for discussion or debate before third and final reading. Doesn't look like we need to take advantage of that tonight. I don't see anybody ringing in, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council direct the mayor to contact the Minister of Culture and Tourism and request the minister to designate the City of Grand Prairie Combative Sports Commission as a body for regulation of combat sports, including both professional and amateur athletes and events.
Thanks very much, Councilor Clayton. Open for discussion or debate? Did. Councilor Logan?
Just like to ask about what the area would be that if this was successful and the minister had designated us, what extorted geographic area would be covered?
Uh, Councilor Otul? Just make sure your microphone's on there, please, Councilor.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor Given and Councilor Logan. It would be whatever the Grand Prairie Combat sports commission would hold in their area. So, Grand Prairie and area. So, we do have connections with the county as well. Anything that's in the county, we would govern that. And just to speak on that, if I may, there was a system in place where both amateur and professionals could fight on the same card in Alberta. The federal government, I can't remember the dates right now, but it goes back about a year and a bit. And they said that they did not want the amateur MMA events taking place unless there was a sports organization in the province or territory. And of course, MMA is not recognized as a sport in the province of Alberta through the sports of the provincial government. So, there are municipalities hosting these events, and we are not at this point in time. What we would like to do is get these amateur athletes that are competing, and there's approximately four hundred in the peace country. They are not competing in Alberta now. They are traveling out of the province where there are places for them to compete in a legal situation. And we just wanna have that authority that we be able to host that. That's the bottom line.
Thanks very much, Councilor Otul. Councilor Thiessen?
I guess, thank you, Mayor Bill. This, I guess I'm gonna direct it right across on council chamber to my cohort over there, Councilor Otul. What other municipalities within the province have taken this into their own jurisdiction? Like Edmonton, Calgary, Red Deer, any of those or...
Councilor Otul?
I can tell you that Edmonton still hosts amateur, professional boats. Calgary is doing the same thing, just outside of Red Deer, they're doing the event. Fort McMurray is doing the events. And basically, we felt that we didn't want to rock the boat by doing anything that we weren't authorized to do. And I can tell you that when we have these events, there is a one doctor for sure, possibly two. We have a paramedic on site, we have EMTs, first aid personnel. They're going through a rigorous, they go through the same rigorous physicals that professionals go through. So, it's just a matter of making everybody onboard in the provincial government, knowing that we're doing everything we did before. We're not doing anything different, we just want the approval.
Councilor Thiessen?
I've got two quick questions, and then I'll leave the mic for a bit here. When we're talking combat sports, both amateur and professional, this is all MMA mixed martial arts. It doesn't have like boxing or anything like that.
Well, the Combat sports commission does fall into that. We could host an amateur or professional event here in town. It's the MMA aspect that we don't have.
Yeah. Okay. Perfect. And my final question was, I didn't hear drug testing. Do we do any drug testing at these events, or do the organizers do that?
We felt that there hasn't been a need for it, but in the new bylaws, we are putting a line in there that we may, or may in the future, conduct drug testing.
Thank you. And, Councilor Otul, is it, am I correct in my understanding that the need to do this, that federal government change that you mentioned, is because Alberta doesn't have an amateur sport organization?
That's correct.
Not a provincial, there's not an Alberta amateur mixed martial arts or entity? Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct.
And if there were, then that wouldn't be necessary, is that...
And that would necessarily, we wouldn't have to follow through.
So, in the absence of that, the opportunity to keep amateurs competing and potentially competing on, at the same event, where there'd be professional competitions, this is a step that's required?
Absolutely. I can tell you that because of the loss of the amateur, we've lost some promoters. Because they have to pay the professionals to get a card, and it's gotta be all professionals. And if you throw some amateurs on there, half and half, then they don't have to necessarily pay the amateurs. And they get their record, but fights, however it is, but it makes for more entertaining and opportunities for promoters to come into the region. Usually, when you're an amateur, you bring every friend you got to come and watch you fight. And right now, the professionals are coming from all areas of the country and outside of the country to compete here.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Otul. Any further discussion or debate? Councilor Thiessen?
Sorry, guys, I'm just gonna make a comment. I'm not gonna urge anybody to vote against this, but I'm not gonna vote against this motion. And the reason why is not because I have anything against MMA. I guess I'm personally opposed to the glorification of violence in any form or sort. I've been in a few fights in my life. They were all one punch knockouts. I was the guy going down every single time, and that's okay.
You don't remember very much.
That's right, yeah. So, you can see where my slant is on this, but, yeah, I just, sometimes I wonder which direction society in general is going. And so, I'm gonna vote with my heart and my head and my beliefs, and I encourage everyone to do the same here on this vote.
Thanks, Councilor Thiessen. Councilor Otul?
Just to speak on that, I myself, five years ago, had no idea what MMA was. And I'll be honest with you, I wasn't quite sure if I was putting in the right spot or not. As the years gone by, these fighters, competitors, it's a matter of meeting each other before the fight, they're talking, they're discussing things. They have the event, and it's not a big old brawl, it's a matter of submission. About eighty-five percent of all the events that I've been to, the fight was won in the first two or three rounds, and it was done by submission. They get done, yeah, they're upset that they won, or they're upset that they lost. But at the end, they're still competitors, they're doing what they love, and that's it. Have we needed to use some stitches? You know, somebody gets a bad cut and a little bit of bleed, and we put some stitches in, and the bottom line is, these guys are still talking to each other right after the thing. So, it's not a, I hate you and I'm gonna take you down. It's, I hope the best, but I think I'm better than you. And that's the attitude that they have, so, thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much, Councilor Otul. So, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And we'd go to nine point three point four. Councilor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council approve the five-year plan to end homelessness as presented.
Thanks very much, Councilor Clayton. Any discussion or debate on that motion or the plan? Councilor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Bill. This is just, I'm gonna ask this question to administration, because I believe it. But you believe it. Can we do this? Can we end homelessness in five years in Grand Prairie? Yes?
Director Roth?
We certainly will do our best to do that. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll, Councilor Otul?
Mayor Given, I just have a couple of questions here, and I did get some clarification. But if we do not decide to fund one of these organizations for one...
Sure. I just wanna clarify that right now, we're talking about the five-year planned end homelessness. So, it's actually the plan and the contents of the plan, and nine point three point five and all the following ones are actually the different tenders or RFPs. Seeing nobody else for discussion or debate on the five-year planned end homelessness? I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Now, we'll move on to the RFPs, and Councilor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council approve the request for proposal RFP dash zero nine dash four three one dash one five, be awarded to the YMCA Northern Alberta for three-year funding contract in the amount of three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, three hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars for year one, three hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars for year two, three hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars for year three, exclusive of GST as a highest evaluated proponent.
Thanks very much, Councilor Clayton. Councilor Otul, did you have a question?
Yes, I did.
I was just wondering if, for some reason, if this doesn't get passed, where would the money go?
Director Roth, do you have a response for that?
Probably the best alternative would be to redirect this back to administration then, to have administration take a second look at it and bring this back in another way that meets committee's needs. It's my understanding that these funds are allocated by the province to the city, and if they're not used in any way, then it wouldn't flow through to the city. But I think that would be the best alternative, would be to redirect it back to administration.
Sure. So, I just wanna clarify, because I can appreciate, you know, council has questions, probably, likely on one of the RFPs. Can we clarify exactly which one of the RFPs was related to providing supports to the Karen population, Karen tenants? So, there's, in our agenda package, it was a little bit more clear. Director Roth?
Yes, it is item number nine point three point five point six on your agenda, which relates to RFP thirteen dash four thirty-one dash fifteen.
Thanks very much for that clarification, Director Roth. So, we can just ensure that we're all talking about the same thing, because I don't believe there's as many questions or votes on the others. Just so that council members are clear on that. Councilor Clayton made the motion for the RFP zero nine dash four three one dash one five. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a quick question to Director Gary Roth. Gary, but council can also have a discussion, make a motion for money to be allocated to another, besides bringing it back to administration.
Director Roth?
Um, I would, there are implications, because this is an RFP legally, technically, has to follow RFP process. If it's a recommendation outside of that process, as administration, I can't, I have to advise that we'd have to try to stick with that RFP process.
We, I understand you, but we can't.
Well, I wanna clarify, once an RFP process is entered into, there are certain requirements. And I think maybe what Director Roth is saying, you know, council should consider that carefully, because all municipalities are obliged to follow the terms of the Northwest Trade Partnership Agreement, which is the province of Alberta, the province of British Columbia, the province of Saskatchewan, agreed to. So, we're subject to that, whether we like it or not, once we enter into an RFP process. And there are certain penalties in court case law that says that what you can and can't do around RFPs. So, I just would advise council that if council is seeking to do something different than is recommended, that potentially, that the best course of action would be to seek some advice from administration. So, that referral would be the appropriate way to do that, just to ensure that we're aware of any legal implications of a course of action other than what the open air suggests. So, just wanna verify that. Give that caution, I suppose. So, again, we're dealing with, shorthand, the four thirty-one dash one five. Is there any further discussion or debate on that recommendation? Seeing no one ringing in, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And we move on. Councilor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council approve the request for proposal RFP dash ten dash four thirty-one dash fifteen, intensive case management team A, be awarded to accredited support living services for a three-year funding contract in the amount of four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars for year one, and four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars for year two and three, exclusive of GST as the highest evaluated proponent.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Clayton. Any discussion or debate on this recommendation? Seeing nobody in the queue again, I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Council Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council approve the request for proposal RFP dash ten dash four thirty-one dash fifteen, intensive case management team B, be awarded to Canadian Mental Health Association for a three-year funding contract in the amount of four hundred and seventy thousand dollars for year one and four hundred and eighty thousand dollars for year two and three, exclusive of GST as the highest evaluated proponent.
Thanks very much, Councilor Clayton. Any discussion or debate on this recommendation? Again, nobody ringing in or waving their arms frantically, so I'll call for the vote. I wasn't looking at you, Councilor Thiessen. Is that something you're likely to do? Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council approve the request for proposal RFP dash eleven dash four thirty-one dash fifteen, be awarded to Centerpoint Facilitation Inc. for a three-year funding contract in the amount... Sorry, did I already do that one?
No, I think we're on.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you. Amount of four hundred and seventy thousand dollars for year one and four hundred and eighty thousand dollars for year two and three, exclusive of GST as the highest evaluated proponent.
Thanks very much, Councilor Clayton. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Council Clayton?
I move council approve the request for proposal RFP dash twelve dash four thirty-one dash fifteen, be awarded to accredited supportive living services for a two-year funding contract in the amount of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars for year one and three hundred and seventy thousand dollars for year two, exclusive of GST as the highest evaluated proponent.
Thanks, Councilor Clayton. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Again, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Council Clayton?
I move council approve the request for proposal RFP dash thirteen dash four thirty-one dash fifteen, be awarded to the YMCA Northern Alberta for a two-year funding contract in the amount of three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars for year one and three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars for year two, exclusive of GST as the highest evaluated proponent.
Thanks very much, Councilor Clayton. Open for discussion and debate. Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I urge council to vote against this. I believe sometimes things are overlooked, and sometimes RFPs, how they're presented, aren't done. I believe this is a new funding, and as we had both coming up, talking about it, I believe funding could have been directed a different way and used a lot more appropriately, maybe even more directly and involved within the community more locally to know what was happening. I urge council to vote against this.
Thanks, Councilor McLean. Councilor Tarrant?
I will, excuse me, I will be voting for this motion. I expressed my concerns at the committee. I think where there's some issues with the RFP process is in terms of council's role in directing some of the conditions and putting out some information for the RFP process. I think it's something that council should maybe have a discussion on going forward, not just looking at just these RFPs, but other RFPs, seeing what council's role should be in them and which ones we should help put terms towards. With that said, I will be voting for this because we have a legally binding process in place. We can't just, you know, the reason we have these processes in place is not so, is so that council just can't on a whim change which ones they want to pick and choose. If we've committed to this process, we have to follow through with the process. And if that needs to be changed, then that's... And if that needs to be changed, then that's something we need to look at in the future.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Yeah, I'm going to be voting for this. Not happy about it, but I will be voting for it. I feel that we put a lot of time and effort into that Karen in the Boulevard and I just hope that this doesn't slow down or cause, in the future, concerns. I don't know how the operation runs over there. But I really feel that the process was done, maybe not the way I'd like to see it, the outcome, but it was the highest evaluated proponent. And I don't know if it was done in the most fairest way. I'm not going any further there, but as was said by councillor Tarant, it is a process that we have, we have to honor that. And the only way we can make changes is make changes. And that'll have to be in the future. And I hope in the near future, we do review this and make the process a little bit fairer in this sort of thing. So that's all I've got to say.
Thanks councillor O'Toole. There's a number of other people in the queue and certainly I'll get to them. I'll just inject myself in the middle of the conversation rather than at the end. I have a real challenge with this instance because if, because council has, council and I, by my votes, have accepted the recommendation of the Community Advisory Board on Homelessness on all of the other items that were before us. And because I didn't have the benefit or council didn't have the benefit of being there to see the details and we've accepted their recommendation every other instance, I have a difficult time saying, well, I don't accept your recommendation on this, but I do on everything else. You know, I think we put in place a process as had been mentioned. And we respect the advice that we're given, but I appreciate the fact that there may be other ways that we'd like to consider delivering a service. In the end, I believe that the intent of the dollars were to provide service and supports to people living in one specific building. But I don't think that there was a determination made on how that service should be delivered or who should deliver. I think that the YMCA is an entity that is experienced in addressing the needs of individuals like this, although they may not have done it in our community before. So the opportunity to bring in expertise from outside the community is useful. That's how you learn things and build the capacity in your community. So it's a pretty challenging situation. I would be open to considering this and getting more detail on it. Unfortunately, at the committee meeting where this is brought forward, I wasn't able to stay for the entire meeting, so there may have been additional details that I missed out on. But administration, our acting city manager, has been able to pass on at a high level a note from the Northwest Trade Partnership Agreement website that identifies exceptions to that requirement. And it says that while the agreement applies to most purchasing, there are certain exceptions, including but not limited to. And the first bullet goes on to state procurement of health and social services. So I would like to find out more about that because I'm, based on that information, that's new to me as of tonight, I'm not 100% certain, you know, how that applies, how the RFPs apply. So I guess I'm really stuck. Yeah, because, yeah, yeah, absolutely. Well, there's a couple, there's one ahead of you councillor Rice. But I am stuck on this. I'm interested to hear the discussion and debate because on the one hand, we have a body that we've accepted their advice on everything else and the clients that are intended to be supported will be. And I don't know that I'm in a position to suggest that I know better than the body that's giving us the advice and the help we're asking. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I have to go against what councillor O'Toole and councillor Tarant were saying, that we have to follow through the process. We do not have to follow through the process. We can say no to this and no to all bidders and send it back to administration. So we do not have to follow through the process. I remember when for last council, when it was the bus drivers. Now they're in-house. So we do not have to follow. We can say no, we can reevaluate, retool, relook and decide where we're going from there. So that's all I've say.
Councillor Rice?
Okay, I, oh, I may be incoherent. My blood pressure just went through the roof. What are you thinking? You have a process that was set up by an advisory board that meets monthly and puts their heart and soul into making these things happen. You have a respected staff member that assured you that the process it used is fair, equitable and was decided upon by many, many hours. You come in here on three and four minutes and one person complains and you're prepared to throw that kind of expertise and dedication down the drain? I'm sorry, I've opened many tenders where there's two or three bidders. Not everybody wins. And I don't know why this one is creating the type, and then some of the statements made tonight that the process wasn't fair or it wasn't legal. These are the people who we have trusted for years to deal with this type of thing. I have heard nothing as to why we're doubting them. Not only did they spend their time evaluating, they spent their time to come here tonight to assure us that the process was fair, equitable, thorough and extensive. Anybody that suggests that they're not going to vote for this recommendation, I think is doing a disservice to that advisory board.
Thanks councillor Rice. Councillor Theeson?
You want me to follow that? I gotta admit, I've been a little torn in the process of this all too. And it's not because I don't believe in what our advisory board's saying and it's not because I believe in the proponent. Actually, what I see in this room is a bunch of people that care enormously for our community and have gone out of their way to ensure that people are housed, people are taken care of. The thing is, is this process may not be the perfect process. And we may be able to sole source, as has been brought up earlier before, in the future and stuff like that. But I have to, as representative of the city, I have to trust in the process too. And that's the direction that I'm being pulled to tonight. But I do have a question, not just all statements or how I'm going to vote or whatever. I know there's a process and an evaluation to the RFP. So, and it's a very extensive process. Now, my question is to administration. After that RFP is tendered to the winning bidder and they take it into their house and they administer the services based on the funding that we give them, how extensive is the process exiting out of the funding mechanism? Is it a one-page, how did you spend your money, what type of programs did you do, point form? Or is it an extensive process like the RFP?
Sure, well, sir, so if we're gonna, if the right administration resource is in the room, then we'll ask you to come to one of the administration stations, administration stations. And I'm sure councillor has the right information.
Thank you for that. So the question is in regards to what happens once the successful proponent?
Has carried out all the services of the tender. So they say, thank you for your money, this is what we're going to do. And then they administer all that. At the end of the funding, like as they start to approach the end of it, how do we follow up in evaluating the services that they delivered to our community?
Okay. And the evaluation process is an ongoing process. So monthly, there's reporting that comes in and monthly, there's reporting that goes to the province of Alberta on numbers of clients, services that have been offered. So I think that's an ongoing process as far as outcome measures, evaluation process. And then again, it depends on the successful proponent. The one that has applied has a very strong evaluation component in their particular proposal as well.
Thank you very much for that answer, Cathy. And in saying that, I think for all, to make all council aware that this is a constant evaluation process that we can go back on and say, hey, you know what? That organization didn't do a good job for us. When I was looking at this originally, and this is at the committee level and I couldn't be there for the presentation of it, I actually saw two experienced service deliverers and to me, two relatively inexperienced service deliverers within our community. Now, I'm not saying the YMCA doesn't do great work in Edmonton, but I don't know if they have the capacity here in Grand Prairie to make that happen, but they can lean on that experience, right? At the end of the day, I urge council that the process that I believe we've carried through is a just process and in this case, I think we've got to stick with it.
Councillor Logan?
Well, having heard councillor Theeson's summing up as opposed to the bulk of what he had to say and the impassioned cry by councillor Rice, I just want to say that I believe they're both correct. This is proper process. We do this kind of competition with all kinds of things from getting city automobiles or equipment for the city to, I don't know, a huge number of other things. We had professionals evaluating the process. They came up with the best recommendation they could. I think we honor that process. Let's get on with it.
Thanks councillor Logan. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just concluding. I get what everybody is saying and I don't question. I voted yes to most of these. I remember the RFP process was started in my first term in council and a lot of money was allocated to mental health from the Friendship Centre. You're awarded it. And we seen a building that was old that got occupied and then all of a sudden closed. So I do question the process and I will always question the process of certain monies over time with RFPs or whatever, and I don't care. That's our job to question. Thank you.
Councillor McLean, any further discussion or debate on the motion? I don't see anybody else ringing in, so I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. To oppose? So we move on to the next item. Councillor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move the council approve the request for proposal RFP-08-431-15, be awarded to Accredited Supportive Living Services for a two-year funding contract in the amount of $231,483 for year one and $231,483 for year two, exclusive of GST as the highest evaluated proponent.
Okay, thanks very much councillor Clayton. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Again, I don't see anybody ringing in. I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Clayton, are you out of breath yet?
No, I'm just getting dizzy. No, I'm a, I did have one more, sir. I'm just moving back. The only other thing I wanted to talk about, a couple of quick things. We, at committee meeting that day, we received a transit master plan RFP update, so we're looking forward to the results from that. Mr. Henry informed the committee that improvement and expansion would be included in the, would include increasing north-south transit routes and possibility for commuter routes as well. There was a presentation regarding Volunteer Services Bureau Youth Certification Initiative. And I think that covers the entire meeting. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Clayton. Thanks for standing in for councillor Edinburgh there. We'll move to 9.4, the Community Safety Committee meeting. I think councillor McLean, that was your meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council receive the minutes of Community Safety Committee meeting held February 17, 2015.
Thanks very much councillor McLean. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move the council award tender T-02-552-15, 2015 Bear Creek Outfall Rehabilitation to Trefcon Enterprise Limited in the amount of $537,450, I mean, as well, excluding GST as the lowest bidder meeting city specs. Five hundred and thirty-seven and four hundred and fifty dollars. Five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars.
There we go. So that everyone knows that we're not getting two jobs of just under $600 each. Thanks very much councillor McLean. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor McLean, anything else you wanted to highlight in that meeting?
No, it was quite short compared to previous. This one was good.
Thanks very much councillor McLean. Councillor Logan, I think you're next up with the Corporate Services Committee from February 17.
I'd ask that the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee meeting of February 17 be received.
Okay, thanks very much councillor Logan. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Are there any items that look like they're out of place? It must not be. Nobody's ringing in, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Logan?
Yes, only one item of business to come forward. It was a short meeting with only two items on it and that was to the consideration of the winter reserve. The motion is that council approve funding from the Winter Stabilization Reserve in the amount of one and a half million dollars to cover the 2014 snow and ice control program deficit. Now, I understand that members of council may think that this was not much of a year for snow and ice, but obviously it is because we need the money to pay for it.
Thanks very much councillor Logan. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I was expecting this to come forward. I'm glad it's less. I was hoping it wasn't because I was worried. Because last year, I think in the reading since 1928, since records have been kept, last winter, we had the most snow ever in our city. So.
And, yeah, just to clarify councillor Logan, I'm correct in that this covers the before, the before Christmas portion of this year and the after Christmas of 2013. That's right. Right. Okay, thanks very much. And seeing no further discussion or debate, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Logan, anything else you want to highlight concerning this? Okay, that'd take us to correspondence items and we have one tonight, which doesn't happen often. But we have one from someone, group. What was that group? Some association or something or other. The Alberta Urban Municipalities Association with regard to the City of Grand Prairie's 2015 membership. I don't know councillor Rice if you had anything that you wanted to highlight about that, but just says that our membership fees have come through. I would assume that the City of Grand Prairie would pay them. I'd look for a motion to receive this for information. Obviously, the organization provides a significant amount of value to the City of Grand Prairie. Councillor Rice?
I move the receiver for information.
Thanks very much councillor Rice. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. We had no, well, excuse me, our delegation business, I believe, was handled with the RFPs for housing support services. We have no notices of motion tonight, so that'd take us to council member reports. Councillor Rice, your microphone was last on and we were talking about a UMA update.
The Municipal Government Act Review continues on very aggressively. The minister is bound and determined that they're going to meet the timeframes outlined in the Memorandum of Understanding. We're right now in a series of meeting with the business, Identified Business Community Canadian Association of Petroleum Producers, UDI, Home Builders, Alberta Chamber of Commerce, making significant progress and fine tuning those items that will be going forward in the spring and those that are in the fall, I mean, and those that'll be ready for, to be translated into the regs in 2016. So it's rather exciting, the progress that we're making and the speed at which the government is responding to the need to do this. Also, today I spoke with the Honorable David Emerson, who is the Chair of the Canadian Transportation Act Review Panel. And some of you will know that, very fortunate in that David Emerson actually grew up in Grand Prairie and came back to manage Kemfor at one point. So we have some strong ties there. I commend him on his recent announcement that they are moving the timeframe for that Canadian Transportation Act Review up a year. They will be working on it. And we talked about the need for railway safety. At this point, that act does not require that the railroads advise municipalities of what's rolling through their community. And so we've seen a few significant incidents recently. So they're really stressing that when that act is reviewed, that needs to be addressed for the well-being of the municipalities.
Okay, thank you councillor Rice.
Thank you.
Councillor Theeson, I think you had library board and afterwards Mighty Peace Watershed.
Thank you, Mayor Bill. I did. Would you like me to present them back to back?
Sure, might as well.
Oh, I'm going to windbag this microphone here. So, library, I mean... Oh, I'm gonna windbag this microphone here. Uh, so Library, uh, meeting that we had on, uh, February tenth of two thousand and fifteen, uh, was just, uh, mostly housekeeping. Uh, we went over Provincial Annual Report as a board, uh, and, uh, saw that all the numbers were good. There were a few questions that are coming back to us, but, uh, all in all, it was nothing really serious. We also had our board elections, and, uh, I guess they wanted to keep me, so they put me in chair and added me to another committee.
Just to be clear, they don't have a choice. They have to keep you.
I know, but they could-
Once we put you there, they have to keep you.
You could've said, "Bill, take him off," but they chose to keep me, so that was great.
They did.
Oh, what?
Yeah. How do you know they didn't?
Okay, come on. This is a roast here, is it?
Well, you open it up like that.
All right, let's do it. So, uh, yeah, so outside of that, Provincial Annual Report, we had our board elections. Of course, they came, kept me as jokes are flying around. Uh, we nominated a couple members to go to the Alberta Library Conference, as we do annually, and, uh, finally, uh, we discussed, uh, our executive director's review, and, uh, that's in the process of happening right now, and, uh, I'm sure it's gonna go good. At least I feel it all good. I think Murray's doing a great job, but, uh, we'll see as, uh, as our committee comes back with HR and, uh, determine what all the rest of the members think, and we'll report to the board and then later to council after that. Uh, now to Mighty Peace Watershed. Uh, I had two meetings over the past couple of weeks, uh, one on February thirteenth in Valleyview and one on February twentieth here in Grand Prairie at the GP Museum. They were both full days as we are kicking into, uh, getting out there with our terms of reference, uh, and really seeking how we are going to not only flesh out all the details of the terms of reference that our board has decided on how we're going to address the state of the watershed and approach industry and their environmental situations along the Peace River. Uh, but, um, we started working with, uh, creating our steering committee and getting that all set up over the course of those two days. So it was very intense. Um, we had twenty members, well, eighteen, I guess, all together in the room for two straight days of seven hours length, and it was hard to really scope out how we're going to do this process. Uh, it's a very lengthy process, but part of it is, is building partnerships across the Peace River and, uh, collecting all of the data to fill the gaps of the, of the stuff that we don't have on watersheds, uh, on the, uh, riparian areas that are along it, uh, land use management, water management and all that stuff. Um, so again, I got put on another committee there, uh, on behalf of government. Uh, now, this is a volunteer, so the city has no commitments, uh, in, in that regards unless I have to travel, I suppose. Um, but, uh, that will be taken care of over the course of the next three years. We'll be going all across, uh, the province from east to west, up to northwest territories in B.C., to, uh, prepare and cons- and confirm the support for the terms of reference as the group has defined it, uh, and to develop a communications and engagement strategy and flesh that out and really bring more and more people together. This is gonna be a really intense process, and we all realize that, uh, part of it is, is eighteen meetings over the course of the next two years, um, and pulling in up to twelve different members from the community in their various capacities, whether that's in industry or concerned farmers or, or whatnot. So it's gonna be a very involved process, and hopefully by the time it's all done, we'll have a state of the watershed report and the terms of reference of which that we can act and bring forward to the province so that they know exactly how we're gonna move forward as a province when it comes to, uh, water use management. So that is my report.
So thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Counsel O'Toole, I think you had Philip J. Currie Dinosaur Museum?
Yes, I did. Yes, I do. Actually, I've got one more as well, Centre Two Thousand. But, uh, start off with Philip J. Currie. Uh, we had a meeting here just last week, and I wanted to let you know that, uh, in Febru- or in January, we appointed Linda Side to the board, uh, local businessman in town and lives in the area. And also, this last week, we appointed, uh, Peter Meyerhofer. He's the editor and publisher of the Daily Herald Tribune, so that brings our board to about thirteen people, and we are looking for others to join the board. Uh, as the museum sits now, we had a presentation from the Agricultural Service Board. They will be planning some, uh, excitement here in July, and the Philip J. Currie Museum is gonna be part of that in the promotion of a few, uh, socials there. Um, the inside stuff, the dinosaurs and all the filling, uh, is being produced as we speak. Uh, we've had people from, uh, Tepal Architects, uh, Peish and Reish, and all the other, uh, major, uh, partners in the process of filling in the insides. And in the last, uh, ten days, we've had individuals from, uh, different media and, uh, different, uh, partners come down tour and, uh, give some end. Can tell you that the University of Alberta, uh, has offered us, uh, a deal where there could be a partnership training process for paleontology, and we're looking really close to that. And possibly in the future, we could have a, uh, an area that's set aside for storing of the fossils. And, uh, that's all in the process. It's, it's been on the table. We just gotta come down and, uh, come up with terms of reference on how we're gonna implement that, and, uh, there'd be some money, uh, that's needed to, uh, accommodate that. Uh, but they will give us, uh, once again, another foot in the door throughout the world that we would have multiple paleontologists here at all times. Um, some other stuff, the museum, uh, the, the shop, the two, or the little trinket shop, you might say, is coming in, and the inventory RFPs are going out for that fairly soon. The RFP for the, uh, opening documentary film. So when a person comes into the museum, you can sit in the Dan Aykroyd Family, uh, Theater, and there will be a twenty to twenty-five minute, uh, uh, basically, uh, an understanding video that you would be able to watch. It'll be produced locally, uh, and, uh, it'll be up to date and, uh, give you, anybody that's traveling from out of the area, an understanding on how this whole thing started and why it started, and, uh, so that's being looked after. Uh, the freshwater aquarium will be put in place here fairly soon. Um, and the building, uh, we're looking at, uh, doing some exterior lighting on there to enhance the view in the evening. And, uh, just as, uh, so that's my report for the Philip J. Currie, and, um, I just wanted to let you know that the Centre Two Thousand, uh, was a pretty straightforward meeting, uh, but we did come up with a conclusion that, uh, we've rented the facility out many times for events and socials, including weddings, and, uh, it's been a bit of a fundraiser, a money raiser, but it's also been a source of grief. So we are honoring all of the events that are booked to this day for the year two thousand and fifteen and future, but, uh, we're not accepting any more requests to have evening events there, just because it causes grief. So there will be social events being held there, but during the, uh, year, the tours come in, they mingle with the people that not supposed to be mingling with, and it gets to be a little bit of a... And then you get those Godzilla brides that come in there, and nothing's perfect, so it's just gonna be a little bit of a relief, so. Not all brides are Godzillas, by the way.
Yeah. You might've just got yourself in trouble there.
Yeah, I know.
Kinda can't take it back now.
No.
Okay. Uh, thanks very much for that update from Centre Two Thousand. Uh, we'll start our council roundtable with Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Besides general duties, I have nothing to report.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counsel McLean. That was quick. Uh, Counselor Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, just one thing. Just wanted to do a huge shout-out to, uh, all the volunteers for these, for everyone that helped run the Special Olympics this past weekend. It was a phenomenal event. We had, uh, over seven hundred and fifty athletes and coaches from all across the province, uh, welcome to, into the city, and, uh, the number of, uh, emails that have come, uh, my way, uh, just extolling, uh, how Grand Prairie put on, uh, such a great event. Uh, it's been fantastic to see, and so hats off to, to everyone involved. It was, uh, hats off to, uh, council for, for putting me on that committee. It was, uh, you know, it was a great opportunity, and I got to meet lots of people, and, uh, it was a lot of fun, too. So thanks so much.
Thanks very much, Counsel Tarrant. Counsel Clayton?
Uh, just, uh, in addition to my report, I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. Uh, the, I had an opportunity to attend the Big Hearts for Big Kids event held at Evergreen Park on February fourteenth. Once again, local talent, Tanil, uh, did an exceptional job of bringing the community out to support a great cause and, and set a record at raising over two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which puts her at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the year, for the years that this event has been, uh, established. So it's a great, uh, event, and, and, uh, I just wanna say thank you to her and her volunteers for the hard work they've done in that, uh, event. And I also wanted to send, um, congratulations to fellow Counselor Rory Tarrant for an exceptional job that him and the crew did with La, La Misérable at, uh, GPR, uh, put on by the Little Theatre Organization but, uh, held at GPRC. Um, everywhere you went, everybody was talking about it. Uh, it sold out many nights and, uh, truly was, uh, um, a great creation that they put together. So thank you to everyone and congrats to Rory.
Thanks very much. Counsel Clayton? Counsel O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Uh, I attended a number of events, uh, this last ten-day period. I do wanna mention that the Special Olympics, the opening ceremonies was a very energy impacting event. Uh, the faces of all those athletes being there and all the speakers that spoke, uh, and thanked all the parents, the coaches, and, uh, all the athletes for doing the hardest work they could to get to this point. And when they do leave, they're all winners. Some got medals, some won't. But, uh, that is one of the events that I attended. The other one that I attended, it was the Growing in North Conference, and that included the Taste of the Peace. Very, very good event again this year, and I was privileged to have about forty-five minutes with the keynote speaker, Jay Ingram, and he's a fellow that's been on TV for over sixteen years. He's a science guy, and, uh, when he did his keynote, uh, he mentioned that science can be a tourism draw, too, and, uh, Calgary is hosting an event every year, and, uh, it's just something that we never necess- necessarily look at. We look at, uh, unique things that people might be interested in, but it doesn't seem to think that we'd ever, or we never feel that science is something that would draw people, and, uh, he proves us wrong, and, uh, they have hosted an event in Calgary that, uh, gets hundreds and maybe possibly thousands of people in attendance. So those are two that really stuck out in my mind as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel O'Toole. Counsel Rice? Okay. Thanks very much, Counsel Rice. Counsel Thiessen?
You guys are all saving me mic time. I love it. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be fairly, uh, I'm gonna be fairly brief, but I do wanna mention, yeah, believe it or not, I wa- I wanna mention, uh, quite a few events because there was quite a bit of really meaningful events that happened, uh, throughout the course of the past two weeks. I'm wearing a, a tie-dye shirt. Actually, Counsel Helen Rice bought this for me. I think it was an early birthday present, so she can take that off of her to-do list. Uh, but in support of Mighty Peace Day, and I know how hard the organizers, like, worked to put that together, the volunteers, so it wasn't a part of the event, but I was a part of the opening ceremonies, and you can feel the energy and the buzz in the air. It truly was a great event. So, I mean, I'll wear this to the next Mighty Peace Day, and as, as long as Mighty Peace Day keeps going, I, I mean, I think it's a great event, especially for youth in the community, encouraging them to make a difference in the world. So that was a very meaningful event. Another one that I was, uh, wasn't supposed to give greetings on, but, uh, Kevin O'Toole was a little busy. He asked me to do him a favor, and so I presented on behalf of the city for the Passionate Heart, uh, Spirit of Service Awards Luncheon, uh, which is, uh, dedication to all of our frontline workers and community volunteers and people who make a difference in our community. They work hard, uh, to ensure that the people who are at risk or in need are being cared for and served. And so in that regard, the City of Grand Prairie and, and our community social development, we honor them and we give them out awards. It actually turned out to be a roast for the counselor that was involved. Uh, I ended up being that guy, so I know Kevin O'Toole got off that hot seat. They were making lots of jokes at my expense, which is nothing new for this guy. Uh, finally, uh, this weekend, I have to say, and I wanna, I don't wanna pump his tires a little further, but I gotta say to, to Rory, I thought you did a great job with the entire committee in the Special Olympics. I mean, what a world-class event that came to Grand Prairie. There's so much joy and so much love, and I know how hard you worked as far as, like, having all the food set up and everything else like that. So great job in your capacity. We couldn't have put a better guy on that committee. And to all the organizers of the Special Olympics, I think, uh, big kudos goes out to them and to the athletes especially. I've never, I got to hand out medals on Sunday. I've never seen so much love and joy for each other, even though they lost, and even though they won, they didn't care. There was no competition. They were just happy to be there and happy to be hugging and happy, you know? So that's a wonderful thing. I'll bring back the Special Olympics anytime we get a chance, and so kudos there, Rory. Finally, Bill. I don't know if you guys know this, but on Saturday, the Elder Shelter burnt their mortgage. They had a special ceremony, and, uh, we had a bunch of counselors there, had a bunch of people from around the community there to celebrate this monumental occasion. They're now mortgage-free, and in her speech of thank you and gratitude, uh, Angie Carrar had mentioned that the City of Grand Prairie has always been forthcoming in making sure that they were successful, including, like, giving them a twenty-five-year lease on the land for one dollar. And she said, "I don't think I ever paid that." So she got it rent-free for the past twenty-five years. Well, when Bill came up to speak, he had some very nice words, uh, very heartfelt and meaningful, uh, along with MP Chris Workington. They both are very good. I, almost a tear in my eye there, watching it, but Bill reached deep into his pocket and he pulled out a toonie. Not only paid for the last twenty-five years, but anteed up for potentially the next twenty-five years, or at least Angie Carrar's gonna hold him to that. And, uh, I don't think any contracts were signed, but good on you, Bill, and good on the Elder Shelter. It was great to see, and, uh, I can only hope that we have more projects like that.
Counsel Logan?
Uh, items I wanted to mention. One was, uh, attended the, uh, monthly meeting of the, uh, Community Futures Organization, basically a regional, uh, economic development entity primarily composed of municipalities, uh, tremendously successful, uh, record in, uh, assisting, uh, businesses to get off the ground, primarily businesses that would have difficulty with the normal commercial lending, to the point that, uh, we may have to stop lending money because, uh, it's getting paid back, but it's awful slow coming back. Also attended, uh, uh, the annual general meeting of the Disabled Transportation Society. It was a, uh, excellent turnout. I think there were a couple of dozen people there, and, uh, it was also special in that I was able to meet the new manager of, uh, of, uh, DTS, and a very impressive person. I think he'll do a wonderful job. That's all from me.
Thanks very much, Counsel Logan. Um, so in addition to the items that, uh, are contained in my submission, uh, I was gonna highlight the, uh, Elder Shelter, uh, mortgage burnings. Fantastic to see that happen. Um, but one event that I attended that there weren't any other members of council, uh, the city manager and I had an opportunity to meet with representatives from Pembina Pipelines. Um, they wanted to, uh, inform us of, uh, two projects, uh, and a third that I'll get to, but, uh, two projects that they have going in the Grand Prairie region in the two thousand and fifteen year. Uh, both of them, uh, are expansions, uh, to their pipelines. Um, the first of which is south of the city, obviously tied into the significant natural gas developments that are happening there. Um, it's, uh, essentially twinning, uh, of, uh, the existing pipeline and the existing right-of-way. Um, that project, uh, it's the larger of the two, and they estimate that the required labor will be between a hundred and fifty and three hundred, uh, workers. So that will have obviously a noticeable impact in the community. Uh, in the same timeframe through two thousand and fifteen, they're having, um, uh, some additional expansion northwest of the city, uh, and that one, they estimate is smaller than the two and will likely require somewhere in the area of a hundred and fifty, uh, workers to do that. So those are things that are happening in the two thousand and fifteen timeframe. Um, they were, we were advised that, uh, it, uh, while it is still at the, um, final approval stage, uh, they are moving forward with plans to develop a new, uh, headquarters here in Grand Prairie. Uh, they've chosen a site in city limits, um, and they're committed to that. It will be an expansion over their existing headquarters, uh, which they've long since outgrown, and, uh, at a, at a high level, the conceptual stage, they've expected out to, uh, over time, you know, into the twenty twenties timeframe, uh, handle up to two hundred staff. Uh, so I wanted to relate that to council. I think, obviously, good news for the region, um, and, uh, perhaps counterintuitive to some of the messages that we're hearing about the economy, uh, provincially or, or nationally. Um, I think it feeds into my belief that the Grand Prairie region, uh, is in a significantly different economic climate than other areas of the province are potentially. Um, and although I recognize that there is a significant challenge around with the provincial budget and provincial coffers, um, industry in Grand Prairie, I think, is doing quite well. Um, and I think that's a good reason for a lot of confidence in our community about the direction that we're gonna go through two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and sixteen and beyond. Uh, so I just wanted to relate that to council. That was certainly a productive meeting that I appreciated having. And with that, if there's nothing further, then we'll call our meeting adjourned. Thank you.